In the hot water here. The chalk marker, three hundred and fifty dollars. Uniforms, fifteen forty-three. The banners, five hundred and twenty. Equipment, twenty-six ninety. Repairs to the ice machine, two hundred and twenty. And mulch at three hundred. For a total of eighty-nine forty-two. Minus the donations and fees of sixty-three oh-five. The city has paid twenty-six thirty-seven. Concession supplies, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. And concession sales, twelve ninety-four. For a profit of seven oh-nine fifty.
So I think those differences are simply the more games have been played since I got this report.
Yeah, I think so. And one of the things we're doing is because people have asked, you know, well, this is Parks and Rec. And we only had five thousand dollars to start out for the entire year. Not just ball, because we have other activities. We have parades, we have events, we're gonna start. It's actually gonna work outdoor and hotel, but more about car shows. We're hoping to do movies again as soon as we get a backdrop. Those things are activities, you know, we're working on the Harton Park up there, replacing it. So that all falls in Parks and Rec. And of course, we've talked today about splash parks, you know, pads and different things that we don't have, but can be built into that plan. So if there was a question, well, where's the money going or how are they doing it? Well, this portion of the money, you can see, this is what we have. And we have had, we have ups that do volunteer and they do not charge, you know, but when we have to pay them, is it fifty dollars or not? Eight, yeah. But I mean, so, and these two ladies right here, and Mr. and Mrs. Maloud, and I think Sue Heron and Andy, is that all that's...
Janet.
Janet, and Mrs. Sue Heron. Yeah, and who's the other lady?
Oh, Sandy Hare.
Yeah, has really helped us, a lot have volunteered because a lot, you know, the parents haven't done it, and so these folks have decided they would, you know, work so we could have the program. So we're hoping next year to have a parking rec person that not only works with ball, but with everything. And we still have lots, and I think Alan said, John, don't we have electricity coming up this week? We'll have a look at. But it was around nineteen-hundred, just to fix a few of the lots out there. We still have to repair. So there's a lot more that's actually went into this program than what we had for the entire program. Now, we did have a board that worked on this, and I do apologize that banners didn't get out till late. The city did not do that. The city did not order the uniforms. We just paid for stuff, you know what I'm saying? And I'm sorry that that fell through the crack, you know, we... If something didn't happen that was supposed to, we still will make it up to the folks that donated. But the banners are our plan. So, but we're trying to do as much as we can, as we can appropriately, and we make mistakes.
Yeah, you know, I've said this, it's been thirty years since my kids play ball. I don't have a clue. Everybody that doesn't have kids are out there volunteering, you know, I mean...
And we did find out that the biggest selling item in the concession stand is frozen pickle juice.
I told you.
We can't keep it in stock.
Who knew? So, is there, I know, what's going on with the Mountain Go Trail? Do you wanna do anything with that? I know you've got some dirt up here, so...
Yeah, so that's the next phase, beginning construction. And so the contracts are signed, and we are, should be, should be seeing some, some work this coming week. They were waiting on Cecil and Scooter Bill to cut the hay, so they didn't lose the hay. And they bailed, looked like today, so we're ready to go.
Have you, have you got everything with Coast Enforcement Officer, what the trail, even though it's ours? If you're in the car, are we good on our type of work?
So there's some subsequent subdivision and passing off of the property that we have not started on yet. So that'll all have to go through the planning commission. But what we're gonna do is do all the work first to make it easier to make those subdivisions happen. So we're gonna be giving property to the adjacent landowners. But we haven't begun that process yet, but that'll all have to go through, but we're geared on that.
Because we follow our own format, so I'm clarifying here. Whenever we do something, even with the town, so...
Am I, am I okay with you, Earl, or are we okay with you?
Okay.
So Janet? Jessica, do you have anything?
How many more games do we have?
So the U eight team, and I was gonna say about baseball, I'm having fun coaching baseball. The U eight team has their last game on Thursday, and then we're gonna grill hot dogs out on the ball field and have a little celebration for not winning, but for scoring.
Listen.
And for catching some balls.
For being there.
And making some hits.
That's all right.
But you know what, from the time seeing, you know, when y'all practiced those little guys to today, they're learning a skill, they're gonna be tough next year.
We paid them a purchase.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna get it.
And who's coaching?
We'll tell Kyla to keep it up.
Yeah, they've done both of those.
No. But is Deb, do you have anything else we need to do with that? I think we're good? All right, well, maybe we're going to do a little bit out of order here. Street department?
Yeah, I talked to the Grundy County Road Commissioner today. And he said that within two weeks to three weeks, we could start all the roads he's gonna do. He just had some problem with his equipment. He said he should have the parks for it tomorrow over on H Street. We're gonna do it, then we've got some patchwork on Third.
Camps?
Yeah, and then we've gotta do North Fluff Circle. And then there were just different places, gonna check around doing the fire hall, the parking areas. We hadn't really talked to him about it before going to. And maybe we can get it done while we're there. And then Marion County Road Commissioner said he could start like next week on that part.
One of the things we talked about, you know, we were talking about the roads, you know, and we brought this up. It's almost a half a mile, right, with tar and chip on the Grundy County side that Johnny Ray's talking about. Now, this is different sections, you know, the worst section that he had identified. We're not going in and, you know, repaving everything. But that was not to exceed Johnny Ray said fourteen thousand dollars for everything he's doing. And it's almost, it's almost a mile, isn't it? Somewhere around that, which is, but that's the tar and chip because the maintenance is still good. And they're doing the maintenance work ahead of time. The other was with Marion County, which we'll be paving, all but at the ridge cliff? The cobble sack?
Yeah, the cobble sack on it, it's just tar and chip.
Yeah, because they included that in as well.
The access road too.
You're gonna do it first, right?
Yeah, that was a big deal there, because if something happens, you know, we have another leak in the middle of that road where the guard rail is, I mean, I need a way out.
And of course, I think that one time Shaw Creek let him use the road, but then the former administration purchased this road. And now we're at a point we need to have it. And did we have a water leak or something that John had an issue with?
We did. If it'd been fifty feet the other way, the road would've been flooded.
So this'll give access, but we'll put up a gate there because it is just an access road.
It'll be emergency access.
Yeah, that's what the, we looked at the maintenance, and that's the way that they purchased it. It's emergency access, so...
Is that in the deed, or is it just...
It's in the maintenance. I haven't seen the deed, but we will file it.
We should probably call the deed, because if it's not, I mean, why they purchased it? If it was purchased without restriction, if there's no restriction on the deed, then we could, we could use it if we, in our discretion. At our discretion.
Yeah, if we want more road, but right now we've got...
Yeah, we've got a mandate up right now. I mean, if you don't, if you don't have to, I wouldn't.
No, it'd just be nice to know that we could do it.
Yeah, it's good.
So is he gonna get started on it, Wesley, or he could get started on it?
He might have started.
He said he could be here when? We're supposed to meet him in the morning? At nine o'clock, so we'll know more in the morning?
Oh, I had a question about the, the mountain goat. Do we need to be coordinating with y'all on that one water line replacement?
That water line replacement, it's probably, y'all would probably have to go ahead and do y'all's thing.
Okay.
And then like they did down in Cooley, you know, when we get ready to do that, you cut a section out and pack it back, because that line needs to be connected on up to, like, Summerfield Market before we even do this.
Okay, okay, so we don't need to worry about y'all? Got you, all right.
Do y'all's thing.
Helpful, that's helpful.
And we did hire, we were shorthanded.
Yeah, easier to...
Yeah, and we hired this new employee, and we're glad to have him, he's a good worker.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, Junior Myers, and like I said, we needed, we were often shorthanded, so glad to have him on board.
And you did hire a student too, so gonna be working more time.
Yeah, he's been working on the flag all day today, so he must got double time.
Back to the road though, Keith, on the Marion County side, that is working with the road commissioner. The cobble sack and that section, the ridge cliff would be tar and chip. The access road will be prepared just for an access road. And didn't we, was it about a little over, was it long that we figured today? No, a little over half a mile, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, on the tar and chip part, yeah.
Well, and on the pavement, because what...
Well, you know, that's just a spot thing, where it'd been spot down before, just feeling nosy. Really what we did.
So, but when we get on the Lower Lake Road, we're gonna be correcting sections of that, correct?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so, and that'll happen as well into the next bunch of stuff.
And that'll be all tar and chip?
No, it's paved. No, that's paved on the lower, on the Lower Lake that's paved. It's just the ridge cliff road. That'll be tar and chip, because that's why it's already done. So, but if you're really working with these two people, and I want to come in, both Johnny Ray and Mr. Jim Hop, they've come on board, they've scheduled it soon, if we can work with them. And you can actually run the numbers, we're trying to do within two budget years. We could've done this if we had bid it out, you know, and they're just really good to help us. The only problem is, is once we get into their schedule, it's like a doctor. If we miss their schedule, we might not get it again till next year, because they're real busy in the other counties, you know. And they have to work, if we had property in Franklin, which we have a small, each commissioner has to work in their own respective county. They can't work, you know, across lines with that. So that's the reason we're working with multiples, since we have three counties here.
And we're, we're all still working on a county, on a city roads list as well, so... I think we got a first draft of it from Keith, and I put it in a spreadsheet. And we separated out what's public and what's private. And the next step that I'm working on, and then we'll put out for input from the community, is sort of defining what's a primary road, what's a secondary road, so that we can begin to think about in our budget process, okay, if this is a primary road, heavy traffic, it probably needs asphalt. If this is a secondary road, then we can probably do some tar and chip, and it'll help us do our better budgeting going forward. And that'll be something that, as, we'll have a draft that'll be ready for the community to look at. Just wanna let you know it was in process.
All right, is there anything else, Keith, or I don't know? We're gonna go over to utilities now. We'll, we'll, y'all, when Susan's here, you can come, okay? Because I know y'all, you're about utilities, but I'm gonna let them do their reports and talk about that. Travis is not here tonight, our engineer. He did just text, he said he got caught in traffic, and he said, but if you need him for anything, we can call him. Because he's headed back. John, do you have...
Oh, I don't have a lot.
But you had a correction with the water, right, used down the smokehouse?
Yeah, they have a room with one round, we need an eight hundred thousand gallon. Well, who done this? About a hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons.
I think they multiplied by the wrong number, is what you said.
They did. And they didn't talk to me, and the employee, I don't know why, but anyway, he spoke to about it. He corrected, it wasn't going to be eight hundred thousand.
Because John noted it, and he came up here and he said, "We don't even have that much in our tanks." Of course, we... And he said, "We have to write off what we used." And he said, "There's a problem here." And then he went back and he was looking at some of the information, and he said, "The calculation's incorrect." Then when he went back to the source, like I said, he's addressed the employee. But an employee, for some reason, did the math and said they don't to the fire department, so, hey, things happen.
Well, I talked to water plant, and he said it'd take him six days to pump the ground water.
Yeah, so, hey, so we went...
So we did.
But no, you also, you also did tell us during that situation that we learned a couple of different things, which we probably need to just go ahead and address right now, because we're looking at a GPS system, not the system. I have asked, I did ask Travis today to go ahead and get us the numbers on the water and sewer, because there's things that we really can't fix unless we know what we have. This would be a system that it'll be, you know, digital, we can find it, we can save it forever, and we can add to it. Right now, we don't have that. We got bits and pieces from, I guess, the beginning of time, you know, and not, but it's not digital. We did have some tapes on the sewer system that we've worked on, but nothing was ever put together as a compilation. So Travis said that he would be back in June, this is May, right? He'd be here at the gym meeting with some others.
That was the proposal we looked at at last month's meeting, is that right? It was in packet last month.
Well, it was ninety-eight thousand, everything, that was including roads. But he also is working for the grant with Southeastern Development that they went ahead and put our paper work in for us when Beth came up here to met with me. And there might be some COVID money for him to structure. But he said, and John's telling, you know, we need to know what we're doing. We can't correct, you know, the high and low problem, we can't correct certain water problems. We've got two-inch lines, some places we've got four-inch lines, I mean, speak to that at any time. It wasn't, we didn't have water, but there are some lines. And will you explain to, to the folks here about the water pressure on that end? When people were saying we ran out of water, how you explain to me? Because I'm a layman when it comes to this, and so...
Well, when they had the fire trucks hooked to the hydrants, then they was pulling water out of another hydrant. Of course, it didn't have water there. But the only way, it's just like the girl when he flushes it, the cliff tops, certain hydrants, and he turns them on and flush, we don't have no water at all, presumably. And the only way I know to stop that in the time is to put another tank, throw that in town, which was talked about years ago, but it never did. I think in K Center is gonna build a village or something down there. They talked about putting a water tank down there in a certain area. I don't remember exactly where the area was, but the hydro每年. But that's the only way they could ever keep the pressure up now, that way. I think that's the only way they could do it.
Should, so T-Dot's gonna replace the interstate bridge in the next couple of years, and they're gonna replace the water line that currently hangs on that bridge. Should we talk to them about upgrading that line size?
They are going to, I think. But what he said, we don't have, well, John said, we need to have some type of tank down there to have the pressure. We've got two on this end, so we've got plenty of pressure. And so it would take another source of water, is what you told me, right?
Don't we, don't we have multiple supplies on the other side of the interstate? And multiple supplies on this side, or do we just got one six-inch running out that way?
You've got an eight going to your water tanks, is what you got. And then you got just one six going that way, and you got a six going this way.
So all we could do is upgrade that one to an eight, and we still have a six running from the interstate on? So then we still have to replace that? Yeah. I just wonder if they're, if they're gonna do it at their expense, that would replace that expensive part, and then it would be upgraded from six to an eight? They're gonna remove the bridge that it's hanging on. They're gonna, they're gonna take up all the bridges over the interstate and replace them all. They're gonna remove the railroad bridge, and they're gonna remove both of those, the travel bridges on forty-one A and replace them.
I think we can isolate that line, can't we?
Did we...
Yeah.
Still need to put it back.
Yeah, they're gonna put it back at their expense, as part of the project.
Yeah, it's valid when we decide, we can isolate, and everybody else will still have water.
But, but if I hear you're right, we've got a six-inch from sort of the Waffle House on up through that part of town, so moving to an eight there wouldn't help unless we replaced all that line.
Six inches all the way down to the, oh, sure we can.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a capacity thing, it was more a process we're not using, which with this system, as you know, it'll be identified. So as we start addressing these issues, and piecemeal it or collectively, we can do that from that point on. We actually priced a water tank, if y'all recall, when we had the presentation for the repairs, and a water tank's been involved.
Yeah, I was just asking, that's what happened about that.
Travis working, I'm about to get this company with this other company, we did.
He's working on it.
Yeah, he's working on it.
Well, he's supposed to have several things for June, making your horse look good. So that was, those two items that we've talked about that was brought to our attention. Is there anything else, John?
We were discussing interstate lights.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I suppose, it's the guy that I use do all my pump work. I attempt to be in with, come up looking at him, see, he says he would, but he'd have to use a bucket cook. He, like, he would, but...
Yeah, Keith, you have called multiple times trying to get those addressed, and we just haven't known yet, right?
What's that?
Tried to get the interstate lots, because that was also brought to our attention. And we have it, we have not neglected them, it was just getting people...
No, we've been trying.
Yeah, and, but now, there's also the ball field, if we can get him to look at that. Can you, Jared has some lots at the police department, he has some electrical issues. There's about four things that we could get him to look at while they're here. Because the other person you said was, or the other company you contacted was what, four weeks out? But he's coming up this week.
Love it, you're, you're probably twenty years with you.
John have any other questions?
No.
Earl, we'll go into Coast Enforcement?
We've been discussing, I'm gonna bring everybody up to speed on the twenty-eighteen codes adoption. Somewhere between Sam and I, and he did the ordinance and sent it to me to look at. And I, I liked it, you know, I said, "Hey, this is the way we need to go." And he thought I was gonna bring it, and I thought he was gonna do it, so the wall got dropped with the ordinance. Anyway, we'll have it next month. Matter of fact, I asked Sam if he would make a note to get it on the agenda for next month.
I just sent it to Debbie Spelman, she's gone all the way.
I'm so absent-minded, I probably would never think of it either. Anyway, that's, that's where we are on that. I've got three business permits. Ben's one lane, I think he's here.
This one is here.
How many free haircuts do I have?
Hey, you know, we're recording this.
Only Keith. He's approved. He's got a nice place up there, he's got his life safety in order, so I would recommend approval. And if y'all wanna do that one, if you wanna do it separately, or we can take all three at one time, however you wanna do it. I've also got one for the Williamsy Willow, Jessica Lusk. You see here?
No, she can be here tonight, because she was going to do a temporary, and she can come in June. So let's, you can tell my name, but remember she had...
That's in the country market, and I talked with Tim Rainey the other day, and he said they were, they were, it's the only kind of unit, of the unit elf down there for her boutique. And it's, it's been freshly built, life safety is in order at that place, so I wouldn't have an issue with her going ahead and doing a temporary permit for her until she can appear. All right. The other one is Richard Black, and that's Montego, Montego Inn. And I want to thank him for the hard work he's done. I went down there and looked at it, and there were some life safety issues. Anytime you have a place where people are spending the night, and they're, they're not used to the surroundings like people are in a home, you know, you gotta have exit lights, you gotta have signage and ways for people to get out in case there's an incident. And he was pining up to put in some pretty good, very good-looking exit signs, made them, they even, you know, all the time you put a commercial exit sign in a house, and it just sticks out like a sore thumb. But he did, what he did, they're really good, and they made all the qualifications. And I went by him getting, getting that done. And we feel safer now that we got twenty people in a place that, you know, life safety issues have been totally addressed. Thank him for that. Those are the three that I have. And we'll hold Miss, Miss Lusk up there next month. So we just got two, and however y'all wanna do it. Now, does anybody have any questions for me, other than me?
Because we already addressed Matt, and then is that supposed to be...
So, but you can, you can issue a temporary without our votes?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of, you know, you can do that with voice type commands, it's okay.
And everything's there, it's just she couldn't be here tonight. Because actually, I talked to her Tuesday, or I don't know, one day last week. And she was, had to be out of town, so we said, "Well, pick it, issue it temporary, or I will take care of it." And I had Tom, so you wanna start with Mr. Lane? Chop shop?
I thought that might be a good place for a butcher shop, you know?
Yeah.
But it's a haircut.
It's a haircut. I think you can do flat tops, right? I know somebody that does, likes flat tops. He's smiling back there.
I'll make a motion to approve the business license for chop shops.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Okay, and then we have?
Richard Black?
Yes. Mr. Black is back there. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Black? He purchased the Montego Inn?
I think it looks great. The landscape is awesome. Are you cheap?
We're getting ready to decorate for my mom that I have, since you did Christmas.
I have Christmas, no.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve business licenses for Montego Inn.
I'll send it. Any discussion? All in favor? And so we don't need to do anything with the other one here?
We'll do it next time.
She will have a tip for it.
She'll probably need to be here in that quick.
Jared, do you care to come up, right, because there's something we need... And back to ordinances. We have basically a temporary sign ordinance where people are not charged, they just fill out a form. We talked about this in the office one week or two ago. And so one of the things that will be, and we also have a vendor's as far as permit. And early, you can explain it, I can explain it. Jared will be enforcing a lot of it, is that if it's not a business in town, and they can get like a twenty-five dollar weekly, you know, business license if it qualifies in the area, but, or they get a fifty-dollar annual, because we do, now, people that are, have business in town have no charge for them. We have a permit, we will be redoing those annually, because people make changes, and we need to keep that up with our records and our information. But this has been, how long's it been a warrant, Steve?
Years, kinda.
And it hasn't been being enforced, but as of June first, we'll start enforcing that again. The thing with, like, if you're having a yard sale or something, the medium's off limits unless it's something that the town does. I mean, that's always been that way. There is a ordinance even about how often to step in the medium. Y'all can correct me if you're wrong. But anyway, if you wanna do a yard sale, fine, put out your signage. Well, I mean, you're not supposed to put them on posts, so that's between you and the electric company or whomever. But we ask for them to get a permit, because a lot of people just leave them out there, and guess who has to go pick them up? Either the police department, or even the road, or, you know, the people that work in the streets. And these guys are overworked already. So that way, it's just trying to help people, a little more accountable. It doesn't cost them a penny, they're having one. But we do ask them, you know, fill out this form, you know, be respectful. If you ever have a yard sale, pick up your sign when you get done, you know. And that's the only other way we know to be, have accountability for some of the stuff that's happening. But with the vendors, there'll be people like, that set up, I know a produce person who sets up sometimes here. Well, he will have to pay, you know, either twenty-five dollars a week or fifty dollars a year to be able to set up. We also know who's in our town. Whether our businesses are severe, especially that are in the corporate city limits, we will be renewing our permits annually, but we don't charge for those. But at least we have, you know, a system, we can put that online, which I did tell earlier at the Parks and Rec Committee, website will be up Friday, if nothing happens. They're working with Binlom to get everything transferred, and then we'll be adding to it. But we'll have a website up on Friday, which is taking a while, but it'll be something in the town. And another thing that was addressed, and I just want y'all to sort of address this after we get done. People were talking about, we do have a new committee. There's a couple here that's on it, that's looking at municipal codes and looking at our ordinances. We are aware that some of those contradict each other. So we have this committee, which will be meeting Jan. four, is that right?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday at five o'clock, to set up the structure and set up deadlines, because these things have to go through M-TAS, and some of the things have to go through Comptroller's Office. But it'll be addressing like urban chickens, for lack of a better term. A lot of people know that, you know, things have changed today. You might not get, you shouldn't have a chicken running around your yard, but you can have a, you know, an urban chicken house. I'm not saying that's something that's gonna happen, because the committee's gonna make suggestions, it'll come through the process. There's a lot of things that have changed. Some of our things do, you know, contradict their selves. So let's clean them up, let's fix them, and as we build and grow, make Montego better and custom those things for itself. But if somebody comes and fills out a complaint form, Earl handles certain things, yours like fires and dim houses and like that. Jared will be handling a lot of that with it all, but he will be handling like, let's say that I've got a dog ran a class, and they come in, fill out a complaint form, Jared, what's the process, Jared, that you do?
We warn them first time, second time we saw them, third time it's arrest.
And they will be, can be fined up to so much a day. So, but that's the process, because you have, we've gotta respect our neighbors, and we're not changing anything. So, but that's the process, because you have, we've gotta respect our neighbors, and we're not changing anything, this has been here for years. We're just enforcing it since people complained, but we need a process in which we document, so the city's not lying. So we'll start that as a team first. I mean, if you get something for them, a complaint, you'll deal with that. And Earl, how do you handle, uh, houses and burnouts and stuff like that, what do you know about it?
Well, typically, if it's a burnout, you give anybody a reasonable amount of time to clean it up, and what happened Thursday, it's a reasonable time, or at least make arrangements to have it cleaned up, and then, outside of that, I just send them a letter, return and see. What, which works much, well, what works much better even than that, is have an officer hand deliver a letter. Kind of giving them, telling them, you know, if it's not doing it on Thursday, they'll be cited for it. That's how it works.
So, they're working together, that Matt, and we've got that sort of worked out, as we build and grow, because just to have the communication part between the chiefs, so people know, because a lot of these things may not have been coming up at this meeting, but they've been coming into us with emails and phone calls and posts and stuff like that, so that's the reason we're addressing them, with them here, so folks can hear we've done it.
But it's always, it's very important, as far as complaints go, to get it written down, uh, you know, because people call, and maybe they call the gentleman, or they call Debbie, you know, this house over here, wait, sorry, somebody needs to know about this. It needs to be a form filled out, and whoever's going to address it, they have handed that form, and they've got contact information, and they've got addresses, they've got everything they need.
And so, what I'm hearing is that we're gonna have a complaint form?
We do have them, we already have them, but those will be online too, I mean, people can do it via email, but it's like the media business, and we've been in that for a long time, in the media business, if you don't sign your name to something, you know, then really, it's not valid. And if people are not willing, because we're not, we're not helping picking on things, we're not, we're gonna do what we're supposed to, but it's not our place to do some of this stuff, if it's an issue, you know, if they can let us know, then they can address it the proper way, we're not creating law buildings, and that's the reason I also, you know, we need, if the light forms signed, at least, it's an email, we'll have an email address.
They'll extract the hard copy.
Yeah. So where we can keep it.
And one more thing, Mayor, uh, I think a good name for the license for your vendors is called transient vendor license. That's what other, your district have, they have permits for those, and it's called transient vendor license, or permit.
Permit, yeah, because we're not doing one, since that gets us into a whole noggin. With that, Sam, if we're just going to do, I mean, we already have an ordinance, this is what we charge, does it matter if we change the name without changing the ordinance, do we need to change the ordinance? So we can just change the name on the permit?
That just makes, makes it easier to keep up with, or you could put, you could put transient vendor license per in, whatever we call it in the ordinance, and that way we'll know.
And we could do that for, while we're working on these ordinances, you know, for the next meeting.
Did I ever get you a copy of one?
No, you told me you would, but that's okay, you've been busy.
I'm listening.
Hey, no, I, we had two big things this morning to discuss today, so, but you'll get it.
I'll get it.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for the gentleman here, because they're working together, and I wanna thank y'all for coming to the office and sitting down and going over this stuff a couple times. I think we're done there.
All right.
Can I, can I circle back to streets, because I forgot a couple?
Oh, Jesus. I'm sorry, you get your time in a minute, no, go ahead.
I wanted to follow up on the, um, the jake break ordinance then, so if we have Tennessee state law that already allows us to prohibit a jake breaks, is there any reason why we can't post those signs at the city limits?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Well, but do we need to repeal ours to be able to post theirs without superseding something?
No, we, you need to repeal yours, just to clean things up.
Okay.
But, but, and I sent Debbie a proposed one that just repeals what you have.
Well, well, since we got the other ones, can we do that next month, then we can have our signs ordered at that time?
So we can, we can order some signs?
And I believe I sent, I sent you and Debbie the code, so.
Everybody has it, because I, or they should have it, because I know the school where that email was from.
But it, but it's just in the TCA, and it, and it makes it class C, and if you don't have the right mufflers, I think there was a gentleman here who pointed that out to me the other night, the last time we were here. You know, if they are muffled in the approved way, then, then they're not violation, and if they aren't, then they are. And that's state law, and we don't need to be, you know, we don't need to be regulating what's already state law.
But that will take care of the issue, but it'll make sure that we're doing the proper, because that's all that we're trying to do, and again, I apologize, I didn't clarify that, so that was my bad.
As long, as soon as we can get some signage up, I think that's what people are concerned about.
And, and I agree, and so if we order the signs according to the state code, then we can rescind, repeal, and then put those up, because it's already state law.
My second question for streets was about the Mike Rourke letter, did you see that?
I haven't, wait, oh, yes, he was supposed to be here tonight, yes, you're right, go ahead and name on that.
Um, there was, we got a letter from Mike Rourke, who lives on North Bluff Circle, saying that there are a couple of street signs that are not correct around his house.
Well, he was wanting us to rename the street, and I told him we were found a GPS system, this is, he did meet with me about this.
And I just didn't know, if y'all don't know about it, then y'all don't know whether it's correct or not, but he, he sent a letter that I put up there, just saying that he's having a hard time getting packages delivered because of the signage where, I think mostly where North Bluff meets Lee Street. Did you know it changes there?
Yeah, I think we had changed it.
I thought you did change those, that's what, they did change the physical sign, but he had also mentioned, if you noticed in that letter, he was wanting to change the street names, and I'm telling you, nine-one-one had defined those, and we're working on the GPS system, which may be out there, and I don't think, after talking to Keith, and we were really constrained with street names, of course.
Yeah, I don't think.
But no, he was talking, and I think they changed those, because.
What we did is we added a standard sign too.
Okay.
Can you?
So we got both of them.
So I hadn't checked into it, I just, I didn't know whether you did do anything about it, I figured that was the time to bring it up.
I didn't get the letter, but we did this.
You and I talked about this too afterwards, remember when he, when he was looking for metal, and there was some that was being found away, and he got it? That day, we did talk about it, and we said it could, so it wasn't anything, he just came into the office, and he had also talked to Keith.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but we can check that, yes, sir.
Mayor, while, while we're talking about the jake break signs, one of the things, the statute says that the T-Dog is the one who generates those signs at our request, so we need, we need to work through them, rather than have them make up ourselves.
So we can just contact Allen's office, right? Allen Wolf can get those done, so we'll do that, and that way we'll have them for our next meeting.
I think that was a deal before the way it was worded, you know, if it wasn't worded right.
Uh, probably jake break ordinance.
Here it says prohibit something, and you can't prohibit, but you can regulate it, so that was the difference.
Yeah.
Right, I think so.
Well, we'll get you this letter, it says, he's, he's saying that, it sounds like it may be a nine-one-one issue, he said, one sign now says North Bluff Drive, which nine-one-one says there's no such street.
We can do it just a second.
They heard the name now, huh?
Yeah. But I, I hadn't been out there, so.
Yes, but we did address it that day, and we do have nine-one-one, we have Heather here tonight, she's still with us, uh, as y'all know, we're gonna make some changes in July, which we'll be working with nine-one-one, but she's here tonight, the director of nine-one-one.
Of course, but y'all don't know who I am, I took over when Wanda left. And, um, just from April the twenty-fourth to today, we have answered one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five calls. This is cat calls, this is where we send out fire, EMS, law enforcement, this is not calls that, oh, I have low water pressure, when is the lights gonna come back on? Do you have this telephone number, and all that, we don't cat none of that. So that's a little bit of what we got going on at the nine-one center.
Is that an unusual volume?
No, that is a steadily raising thing, now, take in mind, we have two dispatchers to handle the whole workload, we work twelve hour shifts. First of all, I wanna take the chance to thank my dispatchers for the semi truck, who was the first person that took the call? We were, so we got that fire department out there, we got the people that they need, notice nobody ever mentioned the dispatchers?
We said agencies, wait a minute, he did say agencies, so, and he clarified, I thought you clarified that, it was so many agencies work together, and that was dispatch as well.
Well, uh, that was on the twenty-third, then on the twenty-seventh, we had the smokehouse fire, you heard Mr. Maluth talk about twenty-three units. Now, in amongst this time, we've got twenty-three fire department members there, and their trucks, we have EMS, we have the citizens, we have the calls, we have the officers, and we're dispatching, we've got incoming calls, we've got outgoing calls, and we have people who want utilities. When they arrive on the scene, they are eyes and our ears, we go by what they tell us is on scene. Now, I've had some people ask, well, um, on the fire scene of the smokehouse, we had several calls, yes, every one of them is recorded, public record. Our fire departments was on scene, we had other agencies we had to call that's outside the county, we had South Pittsburgh, we had Marion County, we had Franklin County, we had Coffee County, two dispatchers. We handled it all. So, well, I have got.
Now, y'all also do all of Grundy County.
Yes.
That's one of the things with a plant fire, these were air incidents, that's the house, but they're doing all of Grundy County with us, that's the reason we're working. And then, of course, did they forward Marion County to you?
Yes.
Because there was a situation, just to clarify, uh, Tyler McCullough is what, the assistant EMA for Grundy, and he is going to be meeting with us Wednesday at nine, if we can, for many reasons, but he, he has this service where they do the alert calls, I don't know what it's called.
Yeah, it's, it sends an alert out to your phone, if you've got the app on your phone, it will notify you when there is a severe weather, uh, it will notify you in a situation where there's an emergency thing, like with the tanker truck, you know, staying outdoors, and all that, it's a real good app to have on your phone and to have with you, especially if you've got kids. Um, they can also send out, uh, I answered before about the, or, I'm sorry, messages about the sheriff's department, um, things that's going on in the community that they want to make everybody aware of, that could be a safety issue. So, I mean, I would suggest everybody getting it and put on their phone, I mean, like a weather app, it's something good to have.
And then, of course, Marion County has theirs, and there was a glitch with Marion County, they did not activate theirs, we didn't find out till after the date, we have no control over that, Grundy County has no control over Marion County. Each one has their own, and then Franklin County has one, because I know Franklin was activated, because I got it, I would've got Marion, because I usually get them all, and I did get Grundy's, but we cannot control the dispatching, we don't have a dispatching unit, we work with these guys, you know, and they're on the Grundy County side. Tyler's gonna be meeting with us, Stephen Laban's over Marion County, we'll meet with him, and we'll meet with Franklin County, but that was what happened that morning. I mean, we didn't even know it till after the fact, because there was so much going on, because we were getting the alerts, and y'all got yours, so.
Yeah.
But, huh.
Of course, when you call on the phone, eight and seven, we're the first person you're gonna speak to. We're the hub and the wheel. We're gonna branch out, we're the, we're the spokes, your fire departments, your EMS, we're the ones that's gonna get what you need. There'll be times that we may be busy on a call, especially if it's nine-one-one, that we're not able to answer in a midline, take in mind, you've got two dispatchers, that's a lot of calls in a twelve hour shift. But we do go back on our call log, if it's in a midline, and we do give a courtesy call back, just in case, if we have that number that's present to us, to make sure it's not an emergency, and somebody just dialed it, because they couldn't think of nine-one-one, or it went into Marion County, and they was afraid to dial, because they, they would get Marion County, so they dialed the regular line. Um, we also do NCIC in amongst all this, this is when, uh, the officer needs a tag run, or the officer, uh, needs a DL run, criminal histories, for people that they're gonna make arrests on. Uh, we do entries, if somebody has a burglary to their house, and they have items stolen, we do the entries of whatever's stolen into the NCIC, that way if it's ever taken to the pawn shop somewhere, the big pond or something like that, they run the serial numbers, they get a hit, hey, this is stolen, we've got it entered. Uh, we handle all that in amongst all the calls, so that's just a little bit of what the dispatch center handles. In a day. And it is always, always taken for granted sometimes, just how lucky you are to be able to have somebody on the other end of the line. That's that voice that can calm you in a time of need, get your sense back to you. So I'm very proud of my dispatchers, and I just wanted to thank them for everything that they have done, and they have made me very proud of them in the past month. And, uh, I, uh, I told them I, we're, of course, we're leaving in July, going to Grundy. So it won't be Montegoal dispatch, county dispatch, I think we're gonna be an entity of their own, it's gonna be a big change, but I think we're up to it. And I plan on giving my hundred and ten percent to make absolutely sure that every citizen of Grundy County has the best that I have to offer them, in my employees, and in my field of, uh, I don't wanna say expertise, because it's, I'm no expert at it, I'm still learning myself, but what I have learned over the years, to be able to pass down generation to generation, and keep it within the county. Because I love my county, and I love my people. So, I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity, for giving me a chance to serve as a director.
Heather, um, we have Wanda Magdaniel, who's there for me years, multiple years, and then, of course, Heather, I'm not sure that we've actually been introduced yet, I know you came one meeting, but she's actually the director, who's recently took over. Now, we're going through the transition, they are not leaving us, they'll still be dispatching for Grundy and dispatching for this area, but, uh, strictly, they will be under the, um, nine-one-one auspice, and so, and we'll be a support, we'll be supporting them instead of, uh, the employees actually working under Montegoal. So that's a transition that we're actually doing, that I think is gonna be beneficial to every, everyone, but now, y'all do work, just for clarification, since we're a little unusual, and, um, y'all do work with Marion County and with Franklin County calls as well.
Yes, and THP, TWRA, South Cumberland Recreation Area. We handle, we have, uh, three waterworks, we have Montegoal, Bib Creek, and Tracy. We have Ben Lomond, we have Squatchy Valley Electric, we have Squatchy Valley Propane, we have Middle Tennessee Natural Gas, so when we have an emergency, we have to make sure everybody knows the numbers, it's in the CAD, that way we're on top of it, we can get them out there, get them dispatched, and all of that. Most of it's by memory, after you do it so many years, you've got the numbers memorized, and like with Middle Tennessee Natural Gas, we thought they were on scene, which.
Well, that got taken.
Yeah.
It was just to be communication, and we're gonna take care of that, we're gonna make sure everybody's got updated information. Y'all thought I had, we figured it out, our utility director, uh, and he came to the rescue, him and another person, you two were really deputized, and they turned off the gas, and then the gas people got up here, so, uh, but it was taken care of, and thank you, John, for doing that, and I know Rupert Newsen also helped you do that, because I was standing there, and they went and got city tools, and they were able to take care of it, but now you had worked with gas before, and I think Rupert had too. You know, but everybody was saying the gas is off, and I finally called Heather, because the fire department came to me and said, it's not off, John said, it's not off, so we said, what's going on?
It's his.
Yeah, it's making noises out of, it's not off, so, but y'all got it taken care of, I mean, we'll update all that stuff with you, and our employees and stuff.
How many dispatchers do you have?
Uh, I have ten dispatchers, I have eight full-time, well, Brooke, I hate to lose her, but she's resigning, tomorrow we'll meet her, I stayed with her, Brooke, so I am taking applications to fill a spot there, I've got, uh, eight full-time and two part-time. So, and I have put out there, anybody wanting a job that's interested in that, and it's, it's exciting, no two days are alive.
I have a question about, um, so if you live in Marion County, you're in Montegoal, but you live in Marion County, your house is on fire, you call nine-one-one, what, what happens, Sam?
Uh, if it's on top, you're gonna get Montegoal Fire Department, depending on where you're at, or if it's towards Swanee, you'll get Swanee, uh, but if it's like on Laurel Trails, you'll get Montegoal, and then we'll page Swanee to assist them, or Tracy, it depends on, um, like whoever the fire chief appears on scene tells us to page to help. But on our maps itself, it has, uh, Montegoal, Tracy, and then Montegoal and Swanee, and sometimes we do bring up Pella.
And so, just.
And so, just to clarify for everybody who, what's going on here is, the service is not gonna change. But the employees are gonna cease to be Town of Mont Eagle employees on July 1st, and are gonna all become employees of Grundy County 911, so that the town can focus on things that it's good at, and Grundy County 911 can focus on things that it is good at. And the town will continue to support the 911 system, but we'll do it in a lump sum payment to Grundy County, um, 911 service. Instead of managing all the employees and the day-to-day stuff, which is really, uh, that's a county function, it, it, just like in Marion County, it's done by the county rather than by different municipalities. So that's the change that's gonna happen.
Yeah, no break in the phone service.
So after, after July, we won't have a 911 report, because we'll no longer have, the Town of Mont Eagle will no longer have a 911 department within their town, it'll be a Grundy County function, that we will be supporting.
That's one of the reasons why I wanted to let y'all know that I appreciate all y'all. And hopefully I can continue to serve y'all in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
All right, we're going to go to L Business, we're now looking at the second reading of Ordinance 09-21, and Amendment.
Good job, Heather.
To the personnel policies, this is Ordinance 09-21, an ordinance amending section of the personnel policies and procedures for the Town of Mont Eagle's junior government.
And for those of you who weren't there last month, this is doing two things generally. One is it's providing for an enrollment period for our benefit, so that people can't just ask for them any time of the year they want. If you're hired, you get a period, you can ask for it, other than that, it's an annual signup, just like most businesses do. Rather than before, the policies allowed people to sign up, and, and then unsigned, and then sign up again, and then unsigned, and that was creating a lot of paperwork for, for Debbie unnecessarily. And the other thing this will do is change the health insurance policy to provide 100% of health insurance for our employees. But it, but not for the family policies, to allow them to pay a portion of it if they wanna have their families enrolled. Again, it's getting us in line with what other municipalities and businesses are doing.
And of course, that starts as a new, that the new employees that have now been hired since that we started this process.
Correct, so existing employees, the policy will change, but this'll, this'll take over for new employees coming on.
And is the retirement system changed? Okay, it does mention retirement system, but there's no changes in that. So, do you all hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve on second reading, Ordinance 09-21, amending the personnel policies.
Any discussion? Let's do, Ro Calva, Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. All right, the next one is, you gotta, damn it. Is, uh, Ordinance, this is the second reading as well, 10-21, it's a budget ordinance amendment. The ordinance amending the budget for the Town of Mont Eagle for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021. The prior council had approved the, um, 65,000, we have to, to do a transfer to that funding. So this is the second reading on transferring that funding, this money is gonna be used for the road department, which, um, keep it discussed, the roads that can see start work.
So this is just a transfer of funds among accounts, to fulfill the commitments that the last council made, to spend $65,000 on roads.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to approve on second reading with amendment, which is number.
Zero, 10-21.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Ro Calva, Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Now, uh, we're gonna move down to New Business, which is first reading of Ordinance 11-21, Budget Amendment. And this is Budget Ordinance Amendment, this is the ordinance amendment for the budget for the Town of Mont Eagle for the fiscal year 2021. So, town. Okay, okay, this is by the Board of Alderman of the Town of Mont Eagle, that, that the following amendments are made to our budgets and ordinance for the fiscal year by June 30th, 2021. For the year end, um, if you notice, of course, we have things that were included, uh, we do the advertising now, where we're actually putting them, and I'm just gonna go over a few of these.
Yeah, I'm scrolling, I lost my Bluetooth connection.
Okay, and of course, it's up there, uh, water, advertising, natural gas, attorney fees, um, net telephone, health insurance, machinery, equipment, ball bill. Uh, salaries, and of course, support with that, maintenance of the summer ball league. And so, the total amount of that is $59,031.
Budget was too much for the Bluetooth connection to the, uh, to the screen. Doesn't wanna connect anymore.
So it's again transferring funds from one account to the other, and then one.
Into the year budget keeping.
Yes.
Into the year budget keeping, that's correct.
And if the Samsung will connect, um, there. We can scroll, nope, that's the wrong one, sorry.
They, y'all have the one snap, you see what it is on the jig, maybe I can see anything from here, except for somebody. We're working on our technology to get better with it, so.
Yeah, what we've learned today is that Bluetooth can't quite go that far. So there, I've scrolled through it, everybody.
Well, do we have a motion, uh, ordinance number, this first reading, 11-21?
Well, I, I'll just, I'll just clarify that these look like increases and no increases to the budget, and they are all being alloc- allocated out of unallocated revenues for the year. So this is not putting us into the red, this is taking unallocated fund balance and allocating it, just in case anyone's curious.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 11-21.
First reading?
First reading.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Ro Calva, Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Yes. Now we go to, um, first reading of Ordinance 12-21 with RBT. And this is an ordinance to amend, to amend Ordinance 0-21, amending the zoning map for the Town of Mont Eagle with Tennessee to rezoning portion, partial. 002-07 Marion County Map, 02K Group C from R3 High Density District to C3 Interchange Commercial. This is only 4.6 acres, which is being included, and this is only the first reading. We'll have a public hearing, which is scheduled for June the 14th, and also a special meeting following that, immediately following that, Greg Samson, six o'clock.
Six, our, uh, our.
Six thirty, sorry.
Zoning ordinance required both the Planning Commission and the Town Commission to make certain factual findings. And we did not do that in the original motion, in the original ordinance, so this is why this is an ordinance amending that.
I typed up this little letter, and I'm, wanna read it to you. All right, we have heard substantial evidence from both sides concerning this rezoning. Our zoning ordinance at Section 1207 requires that the Planning Commission and the Town Council make certain findings in connection with a change in the zoning to a par- partial of the Town Council. Although we will have a public hearing at our meeting in June on our first reading, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the revised ordinance based on the following considerations. First, there is no general plan for Mont Eagle, that is something we have to address in the mid-range future. Therefore, the rezoning does not violate nor contradict the general plan, nor does a consideration of a change relating to the general plan come into effect. Second, that tract of land that has been rezoned is one relatively small residential zone tract, which is admittedly necessary for the development of the adjacent larger tract. As the adjacent tracks are commercially zoned, there is no issue of spot zoning. Third, the adjoining landowners feel that they have adverse effects. I think some of the issues they've raised, such as truck exhaust and the water pollution, are not as significant as they have portrayed. There will be increased traffic, but that is more an issue for T-DOT on the state-owned road than it is for this town. The loss of value to their homes might occur, but at that, at this point, it seems speculative. It should be noted that the town does not have a real, a real property tax. It primarily relies on sales tax revenue to provide multiple services. The projections we have seen on revenue from the proj- project and the promise of nice restaurants, facilities, are sufficient factors in favor of finding that the public benefit consideration is overwhelming as it relates to the issue raised by the adjacent property owners. Number four, there is no question that the owners of the project expect to benefit from the project. That's our free enterprise system, we expect that. The question is that will financial benefit be achieved by detriment to the general public? And we have to define the general public primarily as the residents of Mont Eagle. Who, like I said, will have their services funded by sufficient additional revenue, and will enjoy amenities open to the public. And the opponents have raised the issue of additional traffic at the exit there. But my review and T-DOT information leads me to conclude that T-DOT is not particularly concerned about that issue. It's a hard decision to make, but with all that being said, I move that we pass the ordinance in connection therewith, because relative to item one and five, there is no general plan for that area. Relative to item two, the rezoning does not violate any legal grounds. Relative to item three, that the overwhelming public good justifies the adverse effects on the residents of the adjacent areas. And I, relative to item four, that the benefit to the applicant property owners will not be to det- to the detriment of the general public. So therefore, I'm gonna make a motion that we pass, Ordinance 12-21.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess Doreen got a lot of the discussion, but I, I'll just say, you know, we're, we're doing this again to try to make sure that, that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's. And Doreen said it well, that we have taken a lot of consideration in this. And I think that, um, the concerns of the neighbors are real. I think that the concerns about the character of the town are real. And I think there's a way for us all to work through this, and so I have told several people this. Um, whether you are a, an affected landowner, or whether you are just a concerned citizen at large that's concerned about the character of the Town of Mont Eagle. Um, this is something that this council inherited, and we're trying to do the best we can with it. And if you have concerns about it, I would encourage you to continue to be involved in the conversation, because we are still working on this. I think the developers have done, uh, a lot of good, good faith conversation, they've done a lot of good work on the site plan. Um, there's still conversations going on about the best ways to, to protect the neighbors that, that certainly we've been, we've been in talks with. And, and, and I think we're gonna be able to make some progress of making this the best that we can, given the situation that we're in. Um, would I love to see that piece of property developed into a new sports complex for the Town of Mont Eagle? Sure, do I have any way to make that happen? No. Uh, and I have, we have developers here who are willing to do something with that property that's going to be a, I think, a, a long-term benefit to the community. I think there's some real things we need to do, um, as a council and as a community, to, to make sure that we can protect the small-town character of our town, but I think that that can happen. Um, even still with this development, so, um, that's my discussion. And so I would vote in favor of this.
If you don't mind, just to add, you, again, Doreen's covered a lot of it. And yes, until we develop a master plan, which it was like with the Jake break. Uh, six years ago, if I had done this down here, and yes, we're gonna look at it, so we develop it, that that would have not continued with another council. We were working, we were growing, we were trying to get the town, and we did grow together. Uh, Calvin's not here tonight, but we would have probably did some rezonings, I talked to Earl about it. We were not thinking, because that was a plan to put together both the town. Uh, many of y'all were involved with it, that are here today, some were not. But it wasn't picked up, it was dismissed, we inherited this, and we're trying to fix as much as we can. So, for that reason, you know, it's put everybody, and in particular this council, in a hard situation. Because we don't win, but Mont Eagle's got to win in this situation. So we're here to take care of Mont Eagle, and everyone here at the best we can. And that's what we're trying to do.
And I will note that the town budget that'll, that hopefully will pass in first reading under New Business, um, includes money for planning. So we're, we're gonna start that planning process again, and this time, as, as the mayor said, we're, we're gonna go ahead and adopt that plan formally, and make it part of the town going forward, so that even if we're not here, the town has a plan that preserves the character of the small town, that helps us be a gateway to the plateau, that helps us be the community that we all want to be. And I hope that, whether you're here in favor of, um, this development, or in opposition to this development, you'll be a part of that planning process. We'll have lots of public, time for public input, um, we'll be probably doing, using an outside consultant to help us through the process, and I encourage you to be a part of it.
And it will be notices given whenever we start that planning process, there'll be multiple ways of contacting and being here and taking information. So, um, we have a motion, we have a second? Ro Calva, Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doran?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
There will be, and I'm going to say it again, um, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong about the time frame, don't know if you have on there. There will be a public hearing on June the 14th at 5:00, and then.
The public hearing is 5?
Yes. The public hearing's from 5 to 6:30, and then we will have a special power meeting to address only this issue, following that, at 6:30. So that'll be June the 14th, okay? All right, now, um, oh, we have a.
Now we're agreeing the budget.
That's, we've got, yeah, and we've got several meetings about this, I think you've had time to look through it, is that correct? If you have any questions, we do have our 68 done here, if you, if you got any questions for him, but this would be.
Thirty-eight pages, I haven't, I haven't scrolled up.
Okay, the ordinance of the Town of Mont Eagle adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. So, um, you're welcome to get a copy of it, if you wanna see it, we will have another reading at the June meeting. So, um, if anybody wants to get a copy of it, and hopefully, if we get the website up, probably, we'll have a copy of that online. Now, it won't be approved, because we'll have another reading. So, do we have a motion on the first reading of the budget for 2021 and 2022?
I move that we adopt the, uh, budget that we worked on for, uh, the year end of June 30th, 2022, first reading.
Can we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a little discussion, and y'all, y'all probably need to help me, but I think the community should, it may be interested in what we did to this budget. So we added money into the budget for town planning, so that we can put together a, a comprehensive town plan, see this forward. Uh, we added money to this budget, uh, to continue the roadwork, so there'll be more roadwork that'll happen in, uh, in the next budget year. We made sure that the rainy day fund and the capital, um, replacement fund is growing, so we're putting money back in long-term savings, we're building the nest egg back to the plan. And there was a fourth thing, what was the fourth?
We did the parking rent, we did, and we paid money for, hopefully we get a part-time parking rent.
We allocated money to hire a part-time parts and wreck person to help us manage the parts and our recreation programs better. Other, other things we?
We adjusted the insurance costs.
We said by, by changing the structure of the nine-one-one, we were paying, and it was set up years ago, it wasn't wrong, there wasn't anything there, but they needed to change. We were paying probably, and I'm going to estimate this, Don, you can grab me a phone, to the tune with air employees, which were three. And then the other employees and the benefits and everything went in. The town of Montegoel was probably paying, what, one seventy-five? What would you say that that was, Don? Somewhere around there?
I was thinking around one forty-nine.
One forty-one, one fifty. Well, somewhere around that's what we were actually coming out of our budget.
Yes.
What we will be doing now is saving the town a hundred and twenty-five thousand that can go back into our budget because we're going to become the contributor to nine-one-one instead of actually housing our employees in those things. So that was just one savings that we were able to do. And also just sort of add a better structure to that process, what you guys say.
And the insurance change save.
And, yeah, the insurance change because at one time, you can tell me how.
We paid eight percent of the family plan.
Everybody that worked here, about eighty percent of the family plan paid. And we had discussed it prior several years back that, you know, none companies, you know, really pay that anymore and the insurance continues to increase. So that was a savings of the eighty percent. And you can still get family insurance, but the town will no longer be paying that eighty percent just for the employee. Of course, we're going to go through the dentist's license, which is a small amount, and other things. It will be increasing the income and we hope, as we have our businesses open, because I know you've got several that have opened recently and like the Country Mart and other folks, the fellow man left with, you know, this chop. What do you call it?
Chop shop.
That's why I thought it was, but, you know, you know, businesses opening, things that we want done. You know, the enterprise looking at those things. Because Montegoel does not get any property tax money. I don't know where that's, you know, people would say property taxes. If you don't have a hotel, motel, a business, you know, it's like about the drink and occupancy tax. Beer, then, you know, you don't contribute to, you know, the income unless you're spending money, you know, here. And so it's the sales tax. Because we don't have a property tax now and all your property taxes go either Grundy Mayor or Franklin Henry. And they don't share those. Anyway, that's sort of how we get, how we get our money. So we have a motion, we have a second. We've discussed it. Will they run out? Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do citizens' hearing, get online.
Do it.
Dee, I know that Dee has... We usually do three to five minutes for anybody.
I'm going to try to explain this the best way I can. April fifteenth, our water bill, our water was, meter was red. I was not notified until twelve days later. That meter was at the end of my nine-hundred-foot driveway. I had no way of knowing that there was a leak. I called Howell, he fixed it immediately. But my meter was left to run wide open with no notification for twelve days. And my bill for the next two months are going to be astronomical. I called Debbie, she told me that it was not her responsibility to call me.
What I meant was that we don't have a policy.
Then a policy needs to be adopted, okay? This is not right. I'll pay what I owe, but I don't feel that twelve, twelve days, you know.
We notify as soon as we know.
Right. Well, well, that's great. Twelve days later, okay? That's what I got. All right. My feeling is, and, and listen, after you said that to me, Debbie, I called Swannie, Tracy City, I called Winchester, and I called Chattanooga. What is your policy of notifying customers if there's a leak? And they said, well, what we do is we drive by and we do a little thing and we, it loads up in a computer and that's how your meter is read. Then it flashes that there is a possible leak. And then you're notified immediately. One of these is put on the, the door or whatever, or you're called. But in time, do they even send a letter? Now, I know we can't do that because we don't have the manpower. But some policy needs to be adopted because I can understand the first bill. But this being running for twelve days wide open is not a good enough excuse for me. I'm sorry.
Do we have anything on the meter that would flash that would indicate that we have a leak?
No, nothing. I mean, they, I mean, you would have to stand down there at the end of the driveway looking every day and hope it, you know, it continues to not spin out of control. The point I'm trying to make is when, I, I don't know the gentleman's name. When he, when he did that, he knew by clicking the thing that there was a problem because it spins crazy. He could have driven right up my driveway and put this on my door and I would have had it fixed immediately. But I have another bill coming due for four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents on top of the three hundred and twenty-seven dollar bill that I've got this month.
But now, have you got an adjustment? You can't give them one-time adjustments in twelve months.
I had a water leak that I knew about. My hot water heater in my garage messed up. And they adjusted it June of last year, okay? Because, and I knew it and I fixed it immediately. I had no way of knowing this. So I don't really qualify for that, I don't think. But the point I'm trying to make is, this is inexcusable.
So when did you get that?
This, the twenty-seventh of April. It was right on the fifteenth.
What happens is he reads the letter. Then he writes the, the major shoe line out of a logo. And then we print out fifty sheets of metering. So the girls up front, they go through those readings to see if something looks odd. And then they might book orders and they might get them back.
Something's amiss here. And, and, I mean, it's just something is amiss because there's too much time going by here for a person to be notified. Twelve days.
I'm always just asking because normally there's not that many days. She said he had COVID, you know, and he had to take a...
I'm sorry. I hate that. Yeah, I do, I do.
I didn't realize, but we aren't, like everybody else, short of staff. And like I told you, it's a policy change. We need to fix our policy.
But, you know, Swannie's not having that problem or...
Well, Swannie does have more employees than we do, don't they?
Well, I understand that, but the point is, a policy needs to be, either the system needs to change, something has to change. So this doesn't happen again. And I'll be frank with you. I mean, I'll pay my, my bill for the fifteenth that was due on April. But, but this twelve days of running rampant, I don't think is fair. So.
When, when did you receive your last adjustment?
The last, the last adjustment I had for the hot water was in June. So my June, yeah, my June, yes. My June bill would, will come up to be this four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents.
You could probably justify it being in a separate fiscal year.
Well, you're talking if she wants to do an adjustment for that. What we'll have to do is, I mean, the policy does need to change.
I, I mean, I agree. That's the whole reason I'm here today. This needs to be notified to people, whatever you all are doing, however you're doing this, whether uploading fifty pages, I don't get that because that's not what I'm hearing from anybody else. Maybe that needs to change. Well.
All right. I mean, I'm not making excuses. Somebody said today, well, weren't you blaming me? Well, I'm not blaming, but it is what it is. That's all I can say. And, you know, it's like black or white. We actually are developing municipal codes, which is part of that policy and policies and procedures. We have ordinances, well, I was caught, but anyway, and we're having those reviewed. There's people that are qualified, that have agreed to review those, and we're going to start taking their problems we have. We know there's other things we've got to, we do have to address and fix.
And that's the whole reason I'm even coming up here today because it does need, because the next time, it's going to be somebody else.
What's the difference between what your bill was on the fifteenth and what your bill is there?
Here, the fifteenth was three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. The bill here for this other one is four hundred and four seventy-five. That was estimated by Joanne today. So... No, it's red. It was red on, on the seventeenth of May. Yeah.
So that's the difference.
Yeah, if you want to know how many gallons I have used, it's thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety gallons.
But now, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars was your normal bill?
No, no, no. No, okay. No, the, the one, the first bill, okay, let's go back to April, okay? My April bill, okay, was red on the fifteenth.
Okay, what was it?
All right. That was the one I'm telling you, is three hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-six. That was when the leak first happened.
Okay.
Okay? But my bills before are always like thirty-seven dollars on completely, every month, thirty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-seven. So. Okay. I'm talking about two different bills here. I'm talking about April's, which would be this month. And then I'm talking about May, which was red on the seventeenth. And...
Your twelve days went over too, Bill.
Exactly, exactly. That's what I'm trying to say.
But the leak happened before June. The leak happened before June.
Yes, before her year would be it for an adjustment.
But June, last year, but say June, last June was in a different, it's a different year. So, I mean...
But we do twelve months.
Oh, you do twelve months, okay.
So here's the thing, I mean, as far as this, I don't know, we do have our attorney here, I can't have them look at it. If there, I mean, honestly, there's anything we can do. But I do agree with you. We need to look at these policies and we need to work on those.
What am I going to do? I mean, I, I'm planning on paying the one which I feel we are responsible for, okay? Which would be the first one. Because, but, and of course, I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get it fixed immediately. The day I was issued this, Hall came out that afternoon and fixed it. So it did not run rampant after the twenty, twenty-seventh of April. This is what twelve, twelve days of water did to this. Twelve days.
Due to the way utilities are set up, Dee, we have an attorney here and I, we have not talked about this, have we, Sam? You know, this situation, and I don't know if we can. And we have a CPA.
We have an attorney here, was it, what?
So I, I don't know.
The contractor will go up on us for excusing this, Don?
The contractor will say it depends on the entity. Swannie has their policy, Montegoel has their policy, Tracy has the policy. They don't preclude you from adjustments, but that does have to be done by the board. You have to come to the board.
But we don't know.
We have a contractor that says...
I'm bringing the contract up. It's up on the screen.
Yeah, a twelve-month period.
But what, what, what? I mean, I understand, I understand that, I understand that. But again, if I had been notified of this, it would have been fixed, handled. I wouldn't have had this issue.
I think our, our issue is, we don't really want you to pay it, but then again, we can't give free water. So we're kind of like...
I didn't use the water though. It was blatantly non-reported to me by a utility employee who did not report it to me, and it ran out.
Yeah, I'm not saying you used it, I'm just saying it went through the meter, so it's got, I don't know. We got to figure out how.
Let, let me suggest this to you. Go ahead and pay your April bill, hang on to the May one, and let me consult with the mayor and Debbie and see. And if there's a way we can give you relief, I'm sure the board will be willing to do that. But I mean, obviously, they want to talk to me and I need to look at the law and what the...
And I just want a fair policy for everybody.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
I don't, and again, some policies were changed. There have been changes in the last four years. I can't tell you every policy that change has been made. I can't tell you every rezoning thing that's been done because I'm not that good. And if I were that good, I still couldn't retain it. But we're trying to do that, and that's the reason I said come tonight. You have a turn here. But let me ask you a question. I want to ask a question here, policy. If, and knocking this, if an employee wasn't sick, what would have been the protocol when he read? What would have been, well, how do we handle it? I'm just wanting to know. I'm trying to grasp, how do we handle it right now?
The reason we have to do that is very, I put a computer, I print the sheets, Joanne and Connie go through those fifty sheets. It takes about a week for them to go through it all and...
That's, that, that to me is problematic. And I'll tell you why. Because Tracy and Swannie and Winchester and even Chattanooga do it much quicker, much more efficiently. I understand that, but, you know, when he does this, it's told by me by all these companies I called that it immediately notifies him. Well, it notifies them that there's a problem.
Well, it's got a handheld console.
Yes, and why he didn't go up to my driveway and put this on my door.
We don't use a handheld.
Well, he uses a computer.
He drives around with a computer.
Okay.
So we don't have a handheld.
Okay.
If they find something on your building that thinks it's weak, then he has a handheld. So what he drives around with, it, it does do that.
So he was not aware of it when he went by and rehired it?
So Sam, you said you want, as far as I'm talking, a little advice here to look at where we're at, what we're doing. We know now we need to look at policy too. There may be a process we can improve when we're working on one or two, I don't know that. But, and then get back with you. I can't answer that, just like I told you today, that you talked to me. But I said we will hear you and we can fix our policy. We're going to fix our policies.
Yeah. Well, I mean, call Tracy, call Swannie, call whomever. Do what I did and ask them how they, how they handle it and how they expedite notifying, you know, their customers of a potential leak. Five days is a little bit difficult for me to understand. I mean, usually if you're on top of it, two business days and get on it, you know. Well, Debbie, that, that needs to be addressed because we are customers, okay?
And we do, and we do understand that. And actually, we've actually, in a way, are going to address it. But we're, the clerical person that they're actually hiring for the, that we have to have and should have had all the time up here because money is not supposed to go to the police department. It's against the law, but we're getting penalized because of that. But that person is going when they're here because it's only part-time. We'll be helping answer the phones and taking some of those responsibilities, but we just got this done tonight. You know what I'm saying? This actually, they interviewed the person, it was for two weeks. We had a person come in and that just happened today. So I'm talking about as far as people. And then we can look at policy and our attorney can look at this, you know, and so.
And if you, if, if, sir, if you need, if you need documentation of when I repaired this bill.
I'm going to take your word.
I got it all.
I'm going to take your word for it. I'm just advising them on policy, not on the facts.
Well, I'll be frank with you. I called around and they seem to have it in a lot better situation than here.
Well, I mean, if I'm, unless things have changed, Swannie's policy is one adjustment per customer, period.
I didn't ask about their adjustment.
Check. We have a very liberal adjustment policy compared to any other municipal.
It's all about that, just, it's about the length of time.
Yeah, so, so I think...
And water, and we're paying for it.
We have a, we have a, we have, I think, a pretty good policy on dealing with adjustments and being able to provide adjustments. So I'm, I'm not.
Let me ask, excuse me, Nate. What's the difference with the date on your green ticket versus the, versus the date you got it fixed?
Immediately. I got it the twenty-seventh. I got my bill where he sent me, he fixed it that afternoon.
Okay, so you got the green ti, so is that, does the green ticket indicate when we found the leak?
Yes, it's when I was notified.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what you're complaining about is that we don't have the, the automatic notification that Chattanooga does or some of these other entities.
I'm talking about Tracy City or Swannie, which they're not, you know.
Comparably.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working.
There's too many days.
Twelve days.
You know, the university has probably got a little bit more facility. Yeah. I'll, I'll discuss, listen, I'll discuss it and say, I'm, I'm, you know, the problem is that I see here is that if we left a ticket there and not notified you, hey, there's a ticket down here, that's one thing. But...
Back up, I'm, I'm not following.
Well, I mean, that's why I asked, what was the difference between the date you got the ticket and the... Well, I mean, that's why I asked, what was the difference between the date you got the ticket and the date you got it fixed?
The meter was read on the fifteenth. I got the notification that I had a leak on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
The date was, it was fixed, was on the twenty-seventh afternoon.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I do not have my June water bill yet, or May water bill or whatever, but I did call, because it was read on the seventeenth of May.
I understood that, I understood that.
And this one's gonna be a doozy too.
Yeah. I'll discuss it with them, and we'll, somebody will let you know?
I appreciate it, thank you.
But, Jody, we're not making an excuse, but we're trying to address each and every one of these items, like I told you today, when I talked about probably, as quickly as we can. And we have a lot of items we're having to address and we're having to fix. And it's not an excuse, it's reality, you know? So, and that's what we'll be working on. Does any other citizen want to be here? Karen, do you have anything with the library, or does anybody have anything? Okay, council? Okay. We do have the Memorial Day program that will start at eleven-thirty, and will end at twelve in front of the nine-one-one center. And we will be getting this information out. We will be working with focus groups and parks and wrecks and things that we're working on, and have more information as we get it. And as once the website is up and going, we'll get others on Facebook and other things to let you know. So do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All right, I'll have a favor.
All right.
Thank you, thank y'all.